One of the main presenter moving us through things, different people will speak. But obviously, we are in unprecedented times. And we're living in a time of a lot of uncertainties. Our primary message is that we stand at the ready to do what we can do, when we can do it. And us being NorCal Premier. We clearly, we were discussing earlier with the staff. The how different life is right now because we're normally on the field together. We're meeting together, we have interaction. And at this point, it's mostly through through Zoom. And then some even the interaction you have on the field now is also contained and isolated. It's just an interesting time. So we appreciate the efforts of the entire soccer community. And trying to make sure that we all survive and then exist thrive going through this. So that's it. Let's move. Here's our agenda. Andy will go through the review. We'll talk about return to play updates, competition updates, membership, pad, coaching education. Then we'll take your questions.
Yeah, just reminded to everyone, we have a Q and A function on Zoom. If anyone's not familiar with it right now, so any questions you have, please type in to the Q and A. And we'll either answer them as we go or we'll.
Andy's frozen.
Can you hear me?
Hello?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, now you're in and out.
Okay, hopefully the internet holds up here. Okay, should we move on?
Can you go to the next slide?
Yep. Can you hear me again now?
Now we can.
Great.
All right, this will be, this is Andy.
Okay, thank you to everyone who completed the survey was sent out over the last 10 days.
Maybe it'll be you, Ben.
All right, it may be me, Andy.
Go for it.
Andy, we can't really hear you. It's, are you in Liverpool?
They're still fighting over here.
England? Okay, all, all, Andy, until you get better connection, I'll go through this. Maybe you can call in or. Yeah, he says maybe pause your video. Somebody recommended to pause your video, Andy. And maybe then we can hear you. Here's the survey, we surveyed the membership. And we just wanted to share some of the data with you. Because it's very interesting and we met with the board this morning. We'll go into one of the decisions we made this morning. But we considered the survey information that we got from you. It's a compass, it's not an iron clad that we follow, you know, 60% say this. But it's a, it's a tremendous guide. And so we appreciate everyone that filled this out. So you can see a field access is all over the map. But, and this will be part of the challenge of any return to train and return to play that clubs face. You can see the survey or from the extended, the current trial window, which is something we discussed as a board this morning. We have a large percentage, about a third that would like us to. A third that didn't want us to, and a third approximately that thought yes, but with DOC permission. A heartening thing was people with. The number of people that are returning their percentage of their club. Or high percentage and that expect to participate in competition in the fall if we can. So Andy, I don't know if you can speak now or if you have anything to add to that.
Yeah, can, can you hear me now?
Now we can.
Great, that's clearer. Yeah, just a big thank you to everyone who participated in this. It was over 150 clubs that responded, which is a higher response rate for surveys. And like Ben said, you know, the, it's heartening to see that the majority of clubs feel that when leagues are able to get started, they'll be entering the majority of the same number of teams that they were able to last year. So that, that drives a lot of our decision making in competitions. Which we'll get to in a little bit. So this is a little overview of where we're at. I'm sure everyone's pretty familiar with the, with the current situation. US Club lifted their. The stoppage on, on any nationwide activities on May 18th. And put it back on the members to follow local and state public health authorities. I'm sure everyone's dealing with the current. Sort of lack of clarity in guidance between the state of California and counties. That seems especially over the last sort of seven to 10 days, there seems to be a little bit of confusion over the guidance. A number of counties have allowed clubs to start up in camp mode. And a classifying use sports if they work in a certain way as a camp. Other counties are not and are following the state's guidance that there's no recreational team sports right now. We're expecting further guidance from the state at this time. But we're all trying to navigate the somewhat conflicting guidance at the same time. Ben mentioned earlier that the board met this morning. Decision was to extend the current tryout window to August 16th. So that will give clubs, the, the large amount of clubs who currently aren't able to get back on the field or don't have field access. An extra four weeks to run tryouts if they're able to. The board will look at that end date closer to August 16th. And if there's a need to extend, a real need amongst the membership to extend, that will be considered again. But the current window will go through to August 16th to allow as many clubs as possible, as much flexibility as possible to, to set their teams up for the, for the coming year. Gabe, do you want to take over right now and give some updates on US Club?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I think. You know, as you all know, we've been fielding a lot of phone calls, both NorCal and US Club Soccer about. Whether. What's that? Now, I said, we've been fielding a lot of phone calls from clubs and whether it's okay to practice. And. You know, the guidelines put out by the state and county, as Andy had mentioned earlier, aren't 100% clear. You know, you have the state saying that recreational team sports are currently not permitted. At the same time, you have the counties saying that, you know, camps are allowed. So US Club Soccer, we're not really in a position to be interpreting what is allowed or what is not allowed. So we're really relying on local clubs to check with their local health authorities and make sure they're in compliance. One thing I did want to mention, because we also fielded questions about insurance in regard to soccer camps. So US Club Soccer, we do insure in-house camps. And our definition of that is if you. Have all your players from your club registered with your club. And they're participating in a training or a camp-like situation, they are insured. However, camps that are open to outside. Participants, or if you're opening it up to the, you know, local community. In that situation, US Club Soccer does not insure camps and you would have to go outside and get your own insurance. So, and just to reiterate what our CEO Kevin Payne's language was, was for activities to be sanctioned with the normal. US Club Soccer provided insurance coverage. Members returning to play must be in compliance with the requirements established by the applicable local and state health authorities. If members are not in compliance, the activities are unsanctioned. And US Club Soccer's insurance is not in effect. So, you know, I wish we could be a lot more clear on what, you know, what was allowed and what is not allowed. But we're really waiting on clarity from the state and local, you know, health authorities to try to get on the same page.
What if they're not?
That's a problem across the country right now. We're dealing with this and.
Best effort, we, we were talking this morning, if it's a best effort. Then if it's the best with all the information a club has at that time and something happens. Is there going to be? Are they going to understand that?
But we are telling all clubs to try to follow, you know, the typical protocols and return to play that are, that, you know, try to make it as safe as possible for their players, you know, whether it's checking temperatures, social distancing. You know, I just think that the language on here can be interpreted in many different ways. You know, team sports, does that mean playing contact? You know, whereas camps, for example, social distancing is okay. So, you know, we're recommending that local clubs, you know, check with their counties. If they need advice, obviously checking with their own, you know, lawyers or attorneys to, to find out what, what they think is the best thing to do.
Okay, I'm sure everyone has seen part of US Soccer's Play On Protocol. These are the different phrases, and we just wanted to show this to give an indication of, based on the survey where most of the clubs are at. So from what we can see, three quarters of the clubs are still in phase one, which would be individual, the small group trainings. Quarter of the clubs in NorCal still unable to get back on the field. We anticipate that our competitions will resume phase three. The timelines that US Soccer put out are helpful in some ways, but also when we're looking at realistic times to get back on the field. They don't always line up with the state of California, so they have to be taken with a pinch of salt a little. But we thought this would be a helpful indication of where clubs are at and where we're trying to get to in order to resume competitions. Ben, anything to add on this one?
Nope.
Okay, Ben, this is you.
Yep. All right, here's basically where we're at. We stand at the ready and our key is safe. Competitions will start once we're allowed to. And you'll see with our, our later on, what our thoughts are on this. But we, if it's, we're not allowed to play till November for six weeks, then we'll do a six week competition. If, but we're, if, whatever, whatever we can do, we're ready to do. All of our decisions will be based on the health and safety of players, families and coaches. We put health because health first in this, the first one is safe competition. So it'll always be safe competition, but we also believe that sport and being around your peer group and your friends and having exercise is also. A part of being healthy. And so we are, we believe that, that competitions and being around your, your teammates and your clubmates is important. So we are, that's part of our consideration. We will keep communication, collaboration with you. We'll probably send out another survey in August and we want, it's incredibly helpful for us to, to be getting this real time data from everyone. And, and we'll make sure that our communication now as we come is, is regular and that you know, we're here to support you. And we'll try and make sure that the flow of communication back and forth is, is complete. Competition formats and dates will need to be flexible. We're in such an unknown time. We, as all we can pledge is we are ready. If they said you can run competitions on Monday, we would turn it, turn it around like that. We are at the ready. In fact, every single person, including Nina. Who is our office manager is ready to help in competitions if necessary. So. We're ready. The, I, we, we believe that probably competitions, if and when they start will be most likely local based competition. It could be, and we'll go through the steps later, but just that is as a guidance. And then we have, final thing is, is that we will work with clubs and we'll work to have a best practices for those people when you're able to host games. We will assist you in developing those practices. We have a lot of clubs that are moving ahead with this sort of thing and they're sharing. And there's a great feeling of collaboration and, and so we'll, we'll assist those that need the assistance. Here's basically our rolling competition thought. So at the very least, hopefully we get to a point where within your club, you can actually compete. I actually, within your team ideally, it would be nice for you to be able to show up and, you know, and play games within your small groups. If it gets to a point where it's internal club competition and those clubs that need assistance, we will help provide competition toolkits. Some very easy templates for scheduling within your own club, rules, whatever, if you want to go to that level, you could set up, you literally. Maybe it's between three clubs, maybe it's between county based clubs and maybe it's between city based. But whatever is allowed, we're ready to do it. And then obviously the next step is statewide competition. And that's where we're just our normal competitions. Which would be great. And then the large events we see as being the, the last thing coming. And that's where we have, you know, the tournament or club hosted tournaments, state cup weekends, play dates, showcase, all that sort of thing. But this is our rolling idea of how we return to competition.
All right, you think this is me now?
Yep.
All right, good morning, everyone. So just kind of going off of, you know, what Ben's kind of laid out to start. We've, we've put together, you know, internally, we have a more detailed competition calendar. But we've also put together a provisional competition calendar that we'll share in just a minute. And again, like Ben was saying, details are going to change because we're not entirely sure when we're going to get approval to do. To, to do normal leagues. You know, we're going to be relying on the state, state guidance and each year counties. Currently, you know, we, we had been planning on August 22nd start date initially, we pushed that back. And we're now planning for September 12th. The weekend after Labor Day to be our first weekend of competition. And again, just, this is if it's possible. So that's, you know, an asterisk there. And then going through the end of May. Again, one of the things that could, you know, especially in the older age groups, throw a little bit of a wrench in this is. You know, CIF is likely to make a decision on high school soccer on, by July 20th. So again, that could be, you know, there, there could be some other things coming such as, you know, high school soccer, maybe they push. You know, maybe push it back to the spring, something like that. There's, there's possibilities of these kinds of things. But I think we should have a little bit of clarity on that by July 20th, hopefully. So we can make any adjustments early on to the calendar. For example, if, if the, the high school age kids aren't playing in the winter, high school. We are going to make a change to our state cup format. So most of you have probably, and I know I've been getting a lot of questions about the state cup application. We're going to be making format changes to that mainly for, to, to allow flexibility within the state cup. So it's, it's, we're able to move things quicker and to relieve some of the, the extra game stress that might not be possible this year. So NorCal will only be hosting the semis and finals. There'll be, obviously with that, there'll be a reduction in fees. So for the younger, it would be, you know, it would be a greater reduction. The older is usually, we only host the quarterfinals and on, and that, and the older state cup. It also will be, the younger state cup will be taking, you know, the older state cup format. So there'll be a group of four team, a group of four. Then you'd go straight into a knockout round after that. So it would be instead of a seven games, it would go down to four minimum. With up to eight or nine, depending on how you finish out. So it's the same, the same structure for those of you that have had teams in the older state cup. The same structure is the older where you play a group, there's one split. And then from there, it's a knockout competition. And then again, NorCal would host the semis and finals only and the, the fees will be reduced. So these will all be posted this afternoon. All the information, including the application will be up this afternoon. The NPL qualification process is something else we've gotten a lot of questions about for this year. Mainly regarding teams from the state premier moving up into the NPL. So for the O7s, which were U13s last year, the qualification process was very similar. From, to previous years, we just added in more teams qualifying through the state cup and. And the pre-NPL Champions League from last year for the 15s through 19s, so O6s and older. The plan was to have the state premier championship division from last spring played in the fall. And then teams qualify mid-season into the NPL. That is still our plan right now. You know, it. We've also, this morning, we added in the U23 Fall League. There was announcement yesterday that junior college soccer is pushing everything to the spring, all junior college sports to the spring. So we will be offering U23 as part of our, our Fall League. So that hopefully for those of you that have a lot of players that, you know, are playing community college possibly this year. Or maybe you can work together as clubs to give those, those kids somewhere to play this fall. Because, you know, their, their junior college season isn't going to happen so, until the spring. So there's also a possibility of, you know, we're not sure on the recruiting rules. We're guessing they might change for the Division Two already got canceled, the CCCAA. And it, you know, it, there, it looks like there's possibilities of other college sports getting canceled shortly. I know the Ivy League canceled the other, the other day, all fall sports. So, you know, there's a, a chance that there's a lot of players that just won't have anywhere to play. And I think it would be great if our clubs could help them out and give them an opportunity to play in, play in a league in the fall. Again, if we're able to run something. Again, our applications are now open for all competitions. We will be adding that U23 into the fall, the Fall League competition. And then again, the state cup will be up this afternoon if it's not already up this morning, that application. July 31st will be another talent hall. And we hope to have a more, more information and a more complete competition plan by that point. You know, at least, at least give an update on where we're at, at that point. So Andy, you can go on to the provisional competition calendar. So this is just kind of the, the overview look at what the calendar would, you know, is, it would look like. This doesn't get into all the details of each weekend, but it just gives you an idea of which weekend we would have NorCal games. We want, we want people to think of this as weekends too, because there is a, a good chance of field, field. Field, uh, fields not being available for people. So there could be a chance that we need to schedule games on Saturday and Sunday for some clubs. Because they might be down to 60% of their fields. So we, I, I would expect that we will need to use more Sundays this. This, um, this fall to, to, to make sure that we, you know, spread the field usage out a, a bit. You know, and again, this just going to give you an idea. Usually we also ask people, you know, again, we probably could add some games in on those tournament weekends if tournaments aren't happening. You know, as we get later on, that could be something later on that we can make an adjustment. Or if your club isn't, you know, playing, we could, we could, we could adjust some, some leagues to free up field space on those weekends. But we also don't want to crush people's tournaments either. So for now, we're still leaving those weekends in. But this just kind of gives you a general look at what the fall may look like. Once we get, hopefully by July 31st, we have the same calendar, but we have it broken down by, by each event. We have that, you know, already kind of put together, but we, we're not, we just wanted to give everyone a, a general idea of what the weekends of NorCal play would be. So this is our current staff for the competition staffing. This is what is current, the, it's right now, it's myself would be the contact for NPL. U14, the 19 State Cup and also assisting John with the 9 through 13 State Cup. U11 through U19 League and Adult Soccer. Ron Benjamin is, is the pre-NPL and he's assisting with the U11 through U19 Fall League. And John Stoppelman is, is, is U9 through U13 State Cup. He's managing the regional leagues for now and he's also managing the playdates. We are canceling all playdates for the rest of this year up until the end of the year. So no more, there won't be any additional playdates for 2020. We hope to start them up again in the spring. The entire staff, you know, we, we've obviously, the competition staff is, is a lot smaller right now. But as Ben said earlier, the entire. Assistant competition scheduling and, and, and when we're ready, we'd be able to hopefully bring some people back in. Refunds. This was sent out to all clubs. All refunds haven't been paid. If you did not reply to the email that was sent out. Partial refund at that point. So it wouldn't, it would be for our costs, we would still take something. So it would basically be similar to how it was in the spring. There we go. It is, it is, if it is possible. Again, if you're able to apply, you know, again, if we have to cancel, it'll be 100% refund. If you are able to apply now or, you know, in the next month, it would be helpful. So that when we do get the okay to start, we're able to quickly start moving on it. And we aren't, and we can start doing some of the pre-work that we would normally do in a normal year a lot earlier. And, but you know, we also understand if you're not ready, but if you, if you know you're going to be playing in NorCal events whenever we're able to start. It is helpful if you're able to apply just so we have, we're able to plan for it now instead of. Instead of later on, getting a ton of applications at the last minute does take some time to shuffle through and it could delay things a little bit more. So I think that's it on that.
Nick LaSalle.
Hey, good afternoon, everybody. So. Just real quick, the RAC meetings, we were asked to change the scheduling of these. Just because we're going to move this next round of July all to virtual. So obviously no in-person meetings. So condensed it all into one week. So this is your scheduled meetings. Just a reminder that Region 3, 4 are now split into two separate regions. We've also now created Region 9. And that's primarily the Reno area clubs. Well, if you have any questions on like which region you're in, just, just, you know. But I think everybody should be aware of where they're at. So that's your schedule. These are all these Zoom meetings, those links will be sent out. Um, big reminder on mergers and affiliations, so there's been an uptick in these. NorCal actually has a policy concerning clubs merging. And we kind of define a difference between merging and affiliating. The real, the real difference is if you're all kind of coming into one, you know, one same account for player registration. That'll be a merger where the board takes kind of a most, much closer look at that and needs to approve that. Because if you're fundamentally changing your membership, then the board reserves the right to review that membership. Affiliation's not quite as much because those would still be considered two separate members. But even still, we ask if you're in the process of doing these, one of these or working one of these, please reach out to us and discuss it with us. We've dealt with a lot of these and we want to just make sure it's being put together correctly and everything's being thought through. It's totally your business. It's totally your business if you want to go in this direction, we just want to make sure it's done well. There's also been some work done around club area of operation. So we're currently meeting with some clubs and looking at some, you know, kind of database situations of the physical area of operation of a soccer club. That's something that as well, if you have, you know, plans or interests in expanding your geography, to please come and speak with us first prior to pulling the trigger on anything like that. We're in the process doing one-on-one club consulting meetings. So, you know, a couple of things were sent out on that. We've had some pretty good buy-in so far. If you're interested, let us know. On the license front, we are not holding any in-person licenses at the moment. US Soccer has kind of decided to give that back to the, you know, the state and member organizations to determine. But based on where we're at and reopening California right now, we don't feel it's a good time to do in-person courses. We are told by US Soccer that they're in the process of putting together the content for a virtual D-license, which would be mostly all online with then a field portion at the end, so one day on the field. As well as then a virtual in-person grassroots module, which gets a little confusing because there's already the online module for the, like the eleven, eleven, seventy-seven type stuff. And there's already in-person course, a hybrid of that where I believe the entire four-hour course would be online, but with an instructor. So once we have that, we'll be able to start doing those with instructors as well as people normally just doing the regular online one. Once we feel more confident in our ability to get back on a soccer field, we'll look at scheduling some D-licenses with the field portion on the backend. We're also working on and planning towards hosting a C-license that would be shifted to a more virtual form of a C. At the end of this year with the field portion being early two thousand twenty-one. So none of this is set yet and scheduling these obviously is a little tricky at the moment. Aaron.
Thanks, Nick, and hello, everybody. Some updates on the women's committee front. Continuing on with our initiatives to get more girls and women licensed in the way of both coaching and referee license and, you know, the, the pathway to growth and promotion on top of that. We've been previously focusing on our existing coaches and referees. And then we were focusing on area collegiate players. We're always looking to then transition in this next step to our current youth players. And we feel that this is a really appropriate time to do that with these grassroots licenses being offered exclusively online. Being that our players have a little bit more free time given the COVID crisis. Even though in-person has many advantages, we're just going to take advantage of that extra time that we have and include within our scholarship budget, monies for our youth players to get them licensed and, and equipped to go on and move into coaching and refereeing. So like Nick said, we don't have all of those details yet from US Soccer. They've just told us that they intend to give us all those details this month in July. Your existing players that you think have either already expressed an interest in refereeing and coaching or you think would be a great candidate for doing one of those things and help us nudge them along into, to signing up for those courses and looking at the scholarship assistance that we're going to have there when we start communicating that within the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Okay, were those final two items, Nick, did you want to address? There were two items on the previous slide that after Play Sports Coalition and the COVID resources.
Sorry, I, I can address those, Ben. As long as everyone can hear me now.
Yep.
Just about. So Play Sports Coalition, if anyone's not aware of this, it's a large group of youth sports organizations from around the country who are lobbying Congress for additional federal support specifically for the youth sports community. To the tune of several billion dollars in order to, to prop up youth sports through COVID to make sure that all the leagues and clubs are able to run again when, when things get back to normal. NorCal is, is a supporter of this. If your club isn't already, please go ahead and check this out. Google it online, we'll send out the, the presentation with the link as well. And please support it. It's, uh, it's an organization trying to help the youth sports community nationwide through this. So it deserves a lot of help from us. The second link there, links to our website. It's just a reminder that we have a number of resources for clubs to work through these times. So please feel free to, to take a look at that and see if there's anything there that can help your club.
Great. Okay, I'm going to start this and then Andy's Mittler is going to take over. And basically with the pad, so everyone knows we have, it's still running. And so overall, we were speaking about this and having previously run the pad, the, probably the first five to seven years. It, it becomes very easy when you're inside it to feel like there's a lot going on and that people are misbehaving. But when you step back and take a, a helicopter view, you realize, I think we as a soccer community have been remarkably well behaved, given the challenges that this has, this time has presented with us. But we have had some, some issues and so I'll let Andy speak to. We're not going to go specifically into club or to person, but speak some about what has gone on. Andy Mittler.
Thanks, Benjamin. Hello, everybody. So as Benjamin says, overall, I think there have been very few violations the last few months. But the ones that we've had have been kind of, you know, involved. So the issues that we've dealt with recently, we had one club that full-on ran tryouts outside of the window. The board, I think rightfully came down pretty harshly on them with a DOC suspension and team point deductions as well as putting that club on deprevation. We had another club that ran kind of some online tryouts and some other activities that at the time instill or prohibited. It's a new club and, you know, congratulations to them. They have more pad issues than they've played games. But they're now being reviewed to whether or not they'll continue their membership. And then we had another club that held tryouts, training sessions, whatever you want to call it, with players who were registered with other clubs without getting the permission from the directors of those clubs. One thing that I would want to bring up is that I think as we go through this time and, you know, people, I think, are rightfully worried about the continuation of some of their teams and their clubs and bringing in players and having sufficient numbers. Just everybody be empathetic to everybody else because they're in the same situation as well. And the rules that we have are set up in a lot of ways to keep clubs stable and teams stable. And, you know, even if one club's able to monopolize a lot of players or bring in a lot of players, if you have nobody left to play, it doesn't do you a whole lot of good. If you have anything else you'd like me to talk about with that, I'm happy to do it. Other than that, I think I'm done.
Okay, I, somebody, somebody sent me, and first of all, I'd like to thank Andy for the picture. And it's pretty appropriate for this because Sergio Ramos does a lot that no one ever catches. So it's a similar situation, but when he does, he gets the red card. This is, so everyone knows Andy is a non-voting member of the pad. He's actually a lawyer, most of you may not know. And he is incredibly helpful for us in this situation. The rest of the pad people are elected by you or appointed by the REC's. So this is a jury of your peers. This is probably the worst part of being a board member. And I know the board members that are on here would probably back me up on that. We don't sit and we don't relish this. This is one that we're sort of like, ah, it's one of those things we have to deal with. But I, from me personally, they, that looking at the number of people that are behaving properly, I think hats off to everyone. So it's, uh, we are acting firmly, but we really appreciate the, the way that people have dealt with it during this time. As far as we know. David Robertson.
He's not able to join us. Ben, do you want to say this one?
Oh, dude, is this my Scottish accent or is that more Irish? All right.
It's an accent, I'll give you that.
Okay, thank you. So it's a man of the world accent, huh? All right, here it is, the PDP and coaching ad. PDP is obviously a challenge. We have tabled it. So any PDP sess, physical sessions obviously have been tabled, but the PDP department has still been moving. They just finished Ian Mork and I think these are something, I just told him, we need to send him out to everyone. He did some master classes on tactical overview of our style of play. And he did one for female players, one for male and using a video from the women's national team from UEFA Champions League and really fascinating stuff that, that female players attended. And then he did one for male players. Then he did position, actually he did team tactical, then he did another round of line tactical. So the, the goalkeeper with the two, three, four and five, the back line, the midfield line, and then the forward line. And he did presentation for each of those for the players in their position. Or now he's developing or we're developing and he's presenting position-specific webinars. And so we've just tried to make for those players interested to help them move a. The Zoom and to be able to sit on your couch and with a, or at your computer and, and watch these sessions. We received a lot of good feedback. The next course coming up is Andrew Plaza, FC Barcelona football head coach. This should be fascinating. And if you have anyone that you recommend or that you knew, know would do something like this for us, please let us know. And then we have more that will be coming as we move forward. So we appreciate everyone's attendance and participation in these and we hope they've been helpful. Ian, oh, Ian's is not as, um. He's on as participant, not as a presenter, so he can't speak. Yeah, that's all I have on that, Andy.
Would you let me talk to Ian?
Sure, if he wants to, I think it would be interesting to get his, especially with the PDP.
Yeah.
We'll let him speak briefly because I know they're working this week on the next step of how to stay involved and to have those players, PDP players still do something.
Okay, Ian should be with us.
Hey, good, Ian, anything to say here?
Hello, everyone. Thanks, uh, thanks for the quick invitation there, Benjamin. I think I might have smoothie buried in my teeth. So, um, yeah, we are, we are looking at, at what's next on the PDP. We're, we're pretty much exploring all the options with technology to try to have potential programs that they can follow and apps that we could maybe have them provided for them. And, and that way we can continue to kind of track and, and keep this connection with the PDP players. But obviously that's a big challenge. So as we get through these sessions, the positional profile sessions that Benjamin mentioned, we'll do that next week and the week after. And as we're finishing those, we're also then developing what will happen in August and into the fall. I'm not sure, Benjamin, if there's something else specific you want to.
That's great, that's great. Just want to put you on the spot, make sure you.
All right, thanks.
Okay, Andy, why don't you lead the question? We have a few in the Q and A portion and.
Yeah, yeah, we've got a few here. Well, a couple on competitions, so if Jason and Ben, if you want to take these. So one asking if we're going to start with local leagues, potentially at the county level, will clubs be consulted on the makeup of these leagues?
Absolutely.
Of course.
We always do.
I mean, it is, I, I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't say necessarily it's county, but I would, I would be thinking of it as local. I mean, hopefully we're able to, you know, we could be in a lot, a lot of the clubs could be in a lot bigger trouble if they're saying your players can't go outside of the county to play because a lot of us have players from different counties in our clubs, especially around the border. That could be, that could be really difficult. But just getting, you know, kind of the, the thought of even within a region like region six, for example, you know, we would even possibly make it even more local than what it is now. So maybe it's not by county, but maybe it's by just local area. Because, you know, some counties are massive and some are smaller. So again, but it all depends on what we're able to, to do and what the, what's approved.
Great, very helpful, thank you. A few questions that have come in, are we going to be extending the deadline for competition applications now that the tryout window is being extended?
I would assume so. Right now the deadline is July thirty-first, so it's, you know, it's still a ways away. But obviously unless things change drastically for the better, I would assume that that deadline would go into August. Mid-August.
I think, I think it's, to assume the deadline will keep getting pushed back until we know when competitions can start will be very accommodating on that side.
And please be assured that we, there, there will be no charging to you until we know that we can, that they, we begin the go-ahead and scheduling begins. So we've been very upfront with that.
So Andy, maybe I can answer, because I saw somebody had a question similar about, you know, what if our team folds or falls apart over the next.
Yeah.
No, really for us, the, a team dropping, you know, before we finalize divisions isn't a huge deal. It's when a team drops after divisions have been finalized and especially after schedules have been released. Because once a schedule's released and you drop a team, that not only affects NorCal, I mean, we can easily fix it. It doesn't really, it actually affects the other eight or nine clubs, you know, in your division. So that's one of the biggest problems with dropping, you know, way late in the day. It does cause issues for other clubs. So that's why we have the fine, that's one of the main reasons we have the fine in there. You know, obviously this year, you know, we, it's understandable that clubs, you know, maybe there's teams that you're going to have to combine or stuff like that, like we're going to be really understanding on that. Now, if you're pulling your team out to go play in some other league or something, that would probably maybe be a different case. But a team just dropping because you don't have enough players or, you know, they're, they're, they can't continue. As long as it's done before, you know, the schedules come out and by that point, it should be kind of known where your team's at. It shouldn't be that big an issue.
Great, thanks. This one probably more for Gabe, asking about the turnaround time with US Club passes. You know, there's a lot of families within clubs who are waiting to register until they know what competition's going to look like. And as such, clubs probably waiting to register players with US Club until they know that they're going to be able to use those passes in competitions. What's a realistic turnaround time that clubs should be expecting on player passes, especially during those busy periods?
Yeah, I think, you know, during the busy times, it usually takes around, you know, I would plan for ten business days. I think that's on the, on the high end, but usually I'd say between five and ten business days. But to follow up on that question, Andy, we, we talked earlier about, you know, a little bit about US Club Soccer's refund policy because we did close things down for two months. And we're basically doing a credit for clubs that had registered players in March and in April. So the club should have received an email by now if they're eligible for that credit. The other thing we're doing though for the clubs, and it was just announced this morning. The other thing we're doing, though, for the clubs, and it was just announced this morning, and I think NorCal is going to send out a message on this, is we're extending the current registration year or pass card until the end of August. So meaning that if you had a player registered in your club for the 2019-2020 season, the pass card should have expired this July 31st. But we're actually extending it all the way to August 31st, and we'll send out an email to everyone, or NorCal will, for your membership, if you're a part of NorCal, that will extend on to your club.
Perfect, thanks very much, Gabe.
The one, one other thing, Andy, I want to follow up because I saw a couple of questions on the, the chat about releases. And I think Matt Bernard chimed in. I just want to make sure we're clear. A player release is not necessary for a player that was registered in the 2019-2020 season. And say the player goes to another club, the new club would be registering the player 2020-2021 governing season. So there is no player release. However, if a player now, because the tryout window got extended, were registered in the new 2020-2021 registration season, and a player decides to go to another club, that would require a release from a club. So just want to make sure we're clear on that.
Gabe, we did have one question. What is that artwork over your left shoulder?
It's a
Other left, that's your right.
My, my wife's mother's.
Are those antlers?
It's an old painting, actually, I think.
Not the painting, the statue to your.
Those are chofas.
Okay, all right, I'll look that up.
Okay, we have one question in here. If a club isn't allowed to start training, doesn't have fields in time for the NorCal League registration deadline, will we be flexible, allow clubs to join when they're allowed back on the field?
Yes, I mean, I, I have no, usually, again, we usually can add teams in later. And just depending on how the divisions, I mean, it might not be exactly which division, but usually we can add people in later on. I guess it just depends on how late it gets when fields are allowed. But I'm assuming that it'd probably be similar for most of the county that you're in. So we might have to have some divisions, some areas where we start earlier and some that we start later. For, you know, maybe, let's say Fresno, if they were able to start earlier, we'd start them maybe the 12th. But maybe Santa Rosa, which is a long ways away, can't start until the 19th or whatever kind of thing. Like, there could be some of that this year. I, I think one other thing is, I think Ben touched on a little bit. We may get to a point where we have to do something similar like what MLS is doing, where it's just, you know, we get late in the day, maybe October, we're starting, where we just do a short competition of, you know, NorCal is back kind of event or something like that, where it's almost like a tournament or something like that, where it's hosted by the clubs. But we just kind of rearrange our, what we would do normally, and then get back to normal in the, in the spring. That, that's another idea we have that we might need to put in place.
We're open to anything, and we'll do whatever's necessary to get kids playing football if they can safely.
Great. Jason, any further details on the U23 league or those going to be announced a little bit later?
Yeah, I mean, it'll be part of our regular fall, fall league. So we should have the application up by this afternoon, that division added. And we'll start working on the rules for it and, and start, we'll start reaching out to see kind of the interest in it. It's already just from what we announced an hour ago, I'm actually already getting emails about it and people are asking. So ideally, again, just like all of our leagues, trying to make it as local as possible. So it is helpful if we have, you know, four or five teams in each area. And it might be something clubs can kind of, I mean, we might look at ways where clubs can work together to do it somehow or do something like that where they can, you know, maybe you had five JC players at each club that you can, we can kind of push together to play.
Okay, here's one about efforts at the state level. So what's happening at the state level in terms of youth sports? At one point, Tom Boom from San Juan was meeting with the governor's office. Has there been much accomplished and what is the status of this group and is there any progress being made? I can give a little bit of info on that one. The governor's office was, they were speaking with different youth sports organizations throughout the state. They spoke with us, I think, three weeks ago. As of yet, we, we haven't heard any further guidance. I think everyone is, is sitting waiting and expecting the state to give some more guidance on recreational team sports. But as of yet, we, we haven't seen anything additional.
Hey, Andy, I accidentally deleted something. A guy, I tried to, well, I just shouldn't have done it. But somebody asked about the PDP webinars for players, if it could be extended to people beyond the PDP. And I absolutely, my initial response is absolutely. So I'll make sure it's on the agenda that we, I think it should be shared and any player that wants to watch it or coach should watch these. It shouldn't be just, it was for the PDP for management reasons first, but I believe you'll find them. I would recommend any coach to go in and watch Ian dissect the, the game with video and graphics, and it's fascinating. So I anticipate we'll send those out to the whole membership.
Great. Here's a cheery one from Chris Gilmore. Southern California, especially Orange County, has officially shut down for soccer as of yesterday. Do we expect the same in Northern California? I think we can expect counties to be revisiting and their guidance over the next week. And hopefully, there'd be more clarification from the state and the county level. I think that's all we can expect right now.
Yeah, I think it already has been happening in Northern California in some counties already.
Yeah, I believe Buttes County, they got pushed back. Maybe some other counties as well.
I think San Joaquin, maybe. Yeah, there's been a few that have already put something out.
Yeah, it goes to show there's, there's still a lack of cohesion between the state and the county levels at the moment. Hopefully, that gets clarified sooner rather than later. Aaron, here's one for you. What age are youth female players eligible for the referee licensing?
You know, I know for sure it's 16 on the coaching side, and I'm still waiting for some of those details on the referee side. We will definitely put that out with our messaging and when we have all of the details, though, of when we're going to be able to release those courses.
Great, thank you. Gabe, there's a few more regarding player passes for US club. I don't know if you, you seeing the questions coming through?
Not the ones you're referring to. What's the question?
Let me find it. Is there a need for, or is there a need for clubs to buy US club passes if there's not going to be a league season?
If your group is training or practicing, I would say yes. You know, if you're doing individual technical sessions or even virtual sessions, I mean, that was actually something that, believe it or not, but we actually had insurance claims from people doing virtual trainings. So if you are planning on doing any sort of practicing, training, technical, virtual, I would say yes.
Andy Mo weighed in, and he's the guru here. He says it's 13 for referees, 13 years old, minimum age.
Thank you. Okay, a couple more, and then I think we're probably good for today. Ben, will there be a deadline as to when a decision is made to cancel the whole year, the whole season?
The whole, interesting, because I was looking at this. The, the way we operate is we have, I mean, except for the year-round events, it's, you know, we have a fall season, we have a spring season, we even have a winter season, we've even had a summer season. So we stand at the ready. If we can run a three-week competition and there are teams, clubs, and parents that want their kids to play, we'll run it. So we're, we, we stand at the ready. And it may be that we communicate in August 15th that everything's pushed back till, we don't see a window of competition until the end of October. Well, then we'll, we'll keep communicating, be ready to run it at the end of October. You as a club, we've had one club that made the decision to do nothing for the fall, and they were worried about their membership status with us. And we said, absolutely, it's your choice. But if we have teams and we, we think that we can safely run a competition, which I think everyone would agree, that's the first, the first thing that we should look at. And there are parents, and there's a club, and there are coaches that want to enter their teams and do a safe competition, then we'll do it. So I don't think we'll make a decision where we just say, unless this changes radically in a direction where it's clear, you know, to where we just know it's not going to happen, where we can say, okay, we know for a fact there will be no competition until next year. We'll get back to you in, in December. But I don't anticipate that happening. I don't know if anything, anyone else has something bad.
No, that's great, thanks, Ben. Gabe, a couple more here on US club insurance. Does US club insurance cover tryouts if players do not have a current player pass?
Yes. So I think it's, they have medical and, and the club has liability. So you just got to make sure that you have them fill out the medical release form.
Perfect, thank you. And then here, request, can Gabe recap the camp insurance information regarding team trainings in that format?
Yeah, so if a player has, if your club has a player pass card for every player in your club, and you're running essentially a practice or a camp, then it is permitted, or our insurance covers you. If you're opening up a camp to outside participants, so someone from outside your club that does not have a player pass card, US Club Soccer's insurance does not, does not cover that, and you'd have to get a separate policy. I did see on here Gary Dodge had sent a link, which I think is, is updated, and I actually was looking at the link. And it's, it was updated, it looks like yesterday, July 9th. And it's, you know, it's the California government from the state. And under day camps, it specifically says now that recreational team sports are not permitted and will be subject to separate guidance. So if anybody is training during these times, like I said, there's a lot of gray area. And we don't have the answers if it's allowed to or not. I wish we did. Because I know some counties are saying things that might be different from the state. So it's something that you're really going to want to check on within your local county if it's permitted or not. Because right now, it looks like what he had sent, you know, it makes it even more unclear to me, or maybe it makes it clear. But, you know, it does specifically state now that recreational team sports are not permitted and will be subject to separate guidance. So I don't know if that, what, what that, when they'll come out, then other guidance, if that means team sports in contact or if that means individual technical skills. That's where, you know, maybe there's a little unclarity and, you know, people can interpret that differently. But I just want to make everyone aware of that now that Gary did send that and I did take a look at it just now.
Hey, Gabe, that's been percolating for a while, probably for a week now. And that's why I assume most people are running their things as a camp. Because a camp fits into the California guidelines more than, and from what I've talking to most people, they're, they're, what they're providing their membership is at camp. So that, I assume, is covered.
I don't get a chance to look at it, Benjamin, but did you look under day camps?
I looked on it before this meeting this morning.
Okay.
Yep. And there's, I mean, high risk, they rate the risks and the whole, but there's, there's something in there for a club that is running a camp, it is allowed, and you just have to make sure you're following those parameters. There are what they've set out from what I read. Don't, and no one quote me on that. Er, erase that video. No, but I, that's my reading of it. And so everyone should do this themselves, and your board should make the decision yourselves and look at it according to your county or the state and county guidelines. I wanted to answer one because I think this is important from an anonymous, anonymous attendee. Any update on how NorCal will protect its own membership from new leagues popping up? So everyone's aware of new leagues popping up. We have nothing, we cannot stop it, we cannot. So it is a wild west, and it will only get worse for a while. In fact, we were speaking to somebody this morning, it was deeply disheartened about the soccer structure, to which we said, which structure? But there's so much division or the potential for division. Here's what we are. We are an entity that is providing regional, which is Northern California, competition. And we have a very clear set of ideals, of values, and a mission statement. We will not, we cannot stop these national competitions, these, these, the GAL, the ECNL, the whatever. We cannot stop it, the MLS. And there are more coming, UPSL and NPSL and USL. So as all we can do is we will provide competitions according to our organization's mission and our core values. And those clubs that want to only do that, we will try and support you as best we can. And those that want to do us and something else, we've always allowed them. But we are refocusing on our mission statement so that we can provide the 200, out of the 250 clubs, there's probably 200 that only do NorCal Premier. And we're trying to make sure that we're providing the best competition and services possible for everyone, but also especially refocusing on those clubs that have that vision. The best way, frankly, the best way you can protect your membership is doing a good job and doing a better job. And every day, working as hard as you can so that your players are trained properly, provided a positive training environment and one necessary, choosing the competition necessary to provide them enjoyment, to provide them showcasing where necessary and the experience necessary. So if they step into a college, junior college, college, or professional program, or they just continue playing Sunday league, that they have the, the ability or they have the experience necessary to handle the level they choose. And so that's our goal. Andy, any more?
Yeah, great, thanks, Ben. A couple more for Gabe, just clarifications on insurance. And then I'm going to hand over to Nina, who's got a couple of things she'd like to mention regarding communication admin. So Gabe, can you, just a clarification, US Club Soccer insurance only covers injuries, not necessarily COVID infections, correct?
Correct. Same in the past. I mean, didn't, you know, before COVID, we weren't insuring for if someone got the flu or got sick. So it's, it's the same. So, you know, people are not covered for COVID.
And then US club coverage for players coming to tryouts who wouldn't have had a US club pass or any sort of US club insurance prior to that, can you just recap on, on the process there?
Yeah, it's a part of our insurance is that tryouts are covered. So you have, there's a medical authorization form, I think it's, the form is on forms and documents under US Club Soccer. The form, I think, is R002. And you need to make sure that the player has, has filled it out. Ideally, your club would have an online registration system, so it shows that the player was registered to go to that tryout. But we just need some sort of proof that the player But we just need some sort of proof that the player was was, you know, going going specifically to your club for a tryout and was injured at the tryout.
Great.
Time come up.
Yep. Thanks very much, Gabe. Nina, would you like to take the floor?
Yes. Hello, everybody. Just, I want to say a couple of things about communication. Just so everyone understands the process by which we get your contact information. So when you fill out your GOT Soccer account and you put in all your administrator, your DOC, your president and your referee assigner, those are the required roles. Those are the people that we primarily communicate with. So the process I use is that I take that information from GOT Soccer and I download it and then I upload it into Constant Contact because that's where we compose our communication. So what you need to understand is that if you unsubscribe from Constant Contact from any communication, you will be removed from all of the lists that we use to communicate with you. So we understand that sometimes you might get a couple of things that aren't as relevant to you personally. And you might want to, you know, remove yourself from that particular communication, but what you're doing is you're removing yourself from everything. Also, if roles change within your club and you change those things in GOT Soccer, that doesn't mean that that I immediately am aware that you have changed things for Constant Contact. So if you have big changes like a president or DOC, and you want to just shoot me a quick email so that I can update those lists, especially now while we're using so much communication just back and forth for everything we're doing and all the virtual calls, and we want to really make sure that we're communicating with you. And then one more component about that is that obviously I can only communicate with the people whose information I have. So when something, for example, like the refund communication went out, you know, I try to be very explicit to say response required and give a deadline. But obviously, if I'm communicating with people who don't exist within your club, that doesn't help you or help us. So again, just want to make sure that we have that information, that we have it updated, and that we're not frustrating you by not communicating with the proper people. And we really appreciate when you read the communication we send and respond by the deadlines so that we're all on the same page. Thank you. I hope everybody's healthy.
You're natural, Nina. You need to speak more on these. Looking forward to a staff barbecue at your place. That smokes.
This is the Green Bay Hills. What do you think?
Nice. Is that Snowman County?
No, this is Marin County.
I know. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
Thanks, Nina. Ben, you want to close it off?
Sure. Looking at that, actually Nina coming up, and I was thinking how valuable she is to this organization and the hidden army behind all of this. And I know in all of, I don't know who's on this, but I know their managers, who I think are the unsung heroes of soccer. There's the volunteer board members, the people behind the scenes that are making this happen. And I know often they, I read an article about youth sports industry, and somebody thought it was disgusting. They literally used the word disgusting that we're pushing to get back on the field, and they looked at the profit side of it. And I thought that it didn't sit well with me because there's a health side for children and for all of us. I know we were talking to staff this morning, we're not together, we're only meeting and working, and so we're not socializing. So I personally believe that football has such a huge importance to all of our lives that it's worth safely looking at to safely return. And I thought about our community when this person spoke about the sports industry. Well, this industry I'm very proud of. I, for the most part, everyone has rolled up their sleeves, worked together, shared ideas, stepped up to the plate. And I think Northern California, if they took stock of us, of Northern California soccer or football community, then we would get a high grade. And so I hope everyone continues in that spirit. I know I'm not Pollyannaish enough to believe it's perfect, but it's, I I'm extremely proud to to be a part of this community. So that's my final bit there, Andy.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Thanks to all our panelists. We do have some outstanding questions. We'll stay on and type answers to those questions and try to answer them all before we leave. Pardon?
I said, I'll reach out to Gabe, all the insurance ones.
Yeah, we'll put Gabe's number out and we will follow up, there'll be, we recorded this, the webinar, so we'll follow up with the presentation and the recording. Apologies, my technical difficulties. I hope it didn't impact the recording. And have a good weekend, everyone. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Andy. Well done.